And I'll bring you back here and I'll.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this November meeting of the Olathe Board of Education to order and ask Mrs. Carpenter to please call the roll.
Ms. Ashley?
Here.
Mr. Churchman?
Here.
Dr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Poland?
Here.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Here.
And we have a quorum tonight to conduct our business. With that, I'll turn to Dr. All for introductions on our pledge of allegiance.
Yes. Would Cory and Cody please come forward down the center aisle? And there are two students, they're eighth graders from California Trail Junior High, and they represent the K's Club, which is a service club at their junior high school. So they're going to lead us in the pledge, and then I'll tell you a little bit about them. So please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's start with Cory. And I asked both these young men why they thought they were picked by their principal to lead us in the pledge tonight. And I also asked out of the principal, and I think their feeling was they're pretty good kids. The principal said that their K's sponsor saw them as leaders in the service club. So that was one of the reasons that they were picked. And they're good role models at their school and are interested in helping others. Cory is also interested in sports, and he is also, both boys like doing their homework, right? We like it. These are eighth graders, remember. But I checked, they're doing their homework, we know that. And they provide a lot of support. I think Cory's new to California Trail this year, and so he's learning a whole new school and a whole new system. Cory, I'm sorry, Cody Crell, is also involved in K's. He's also interested in sports. And I happen to notice, are you also interested in lacrosse? Is that one of the sports? Which is kind of an interesting, kind of different approach in sport as well as others. And again, he's one of the leaders at school, and I think both of these are fine young men. They're going to introduce their parents that are here, and so I'll start with Cory. You want to introduce your mom?
Yes. My mom is in the back row right here, in the brown, and her name is Leslie King.
Thank you.
My dad is the one with the Kansas on it.
And then you want to introduce your principal?
And our principal of California Trail is Larry Katzuf.
Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you Cory and Cody, both for being here tonight and leading us in our pledge. Now with Dr. All, would you now please provide us with an overview of our meeting agenda?
Yes, we're going to begin the meeting this evening with staff presentations. We're going to start with our continuous improvement efforts and our strategic planning, looking at the operations divisions of the organization. Following that, we're going to have a special focus report on our district food service. And then following that, additional information on our growth and facilities impact plan and report. Following that, will be some general discussion about potential state and federal legislative positions for 2008, and then an update on the sales tax and some information that a superintendent I've gathered for the board. Then we will have our recognitions and awards, and those will be identified at that time during the meeting. Following recognitions and awards, we will have public comments at about 7:00 PM this evening. Following public comments, the board will take on action items. This is a consent agenda first. These are items that represent matters that the board may approve without detailed discussion, or any item on the agenda may be removed for separate discussion as an action item upon the request of the superintendent or any board member. And the board has received supporting information on all of these items prior to action. Following the consent agenda, there will be action on bids, contracts, and agreements, which will be identified by the president of the board at that time. And then specific action items include location of elementary school number 34, the architectural fees for proposal for elementary 34, construction management fee proposal for elementary 34, an action item on woodland, elementary water line easement, and the water main extension petition, and an action item on instructional material reconsideration. Following that, there are a series of future action items, and at, following that, there may be an executive session for the reasons stated under Kansas statute. And then we would have in German. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. All. So we'll move on to Agenda Item 2.01, related to strategic planning for continuous improvement and the operations balanced scorecard. I believe, Dr. Barry, you're going to begin this presentation.
Hi, good evening. We are continuing the process of looking at our balanced scorecard, the strategic plan for the district, and how we're measuring that. This was started in September by Dr. Banikowski in terms of the review. I want to make sure that there's no confusion of the balanced scorecard with the balanced scoreboard. The balanced scoreboard, for me, kind of looks like this.
It's actually just very nice to be in an area where there's a mixture of KU and K-State.
It was pretty purple in central Kansas where I came from. But actually, it is a pretty good performance measure to look at a scoreboard that, on a weekly basis, the Jayhawks are being measured on their performance on a scoreboard. But we tonight, again, are focusing on a scorecard. This was started in September. Dr. Baniski did the first review of teaching and learning and shared with you the action plans and all the ways in which they're measuring the improvement and progress that's going on in the district. What you have coming next in January will be a review of quality staff. In March, it'll be innovations. And then finally, in May, it will be an involvement in climate. And you also need to know that this is part of the big picture of reviewing all of this, in that through Dr. Graham's work, she's bringing it to the senior leadership team to be reviewed. Through Dr. George, it goes before the quality council. And then, of course, we're looking for your feedback tonight. This was also shared by Dr. Banikowski in September, which seems a long time ago, but it was just about two months. But this actually comes from our strategic plan for the district, and based on the strategic directions that were approved by the Board of Education in those five areas. And from there, we have the goals, objectives, strategies, and finally, how we're measuring that in terms of the balanced scorecard, based on how much improvement there's been or what impact it has had. So we tonight are looking at resource acquisition and allocation. And it's kind of an interesting area because it has lots of different areas within that, including construction, operational efficiency, energy management, workers' compensation, food service, transportation service, and fiscal responsibility. So what makes this interesting in this part of the scorecard, at least from my standpoint, is that it's interesting because we have a real mixture of measures that you're going to see, and I'm going to talk about some of those. It's also different because some of them are harder to measure on a monthly basis. Some of them are best as an annual measure. That's all we have to go on. And I'll point that out when we get to some of those. Although more work is being done to see what we can do to measure monthly. It is, on the other hand, there are some in this area that are very measurable. And the work that's done at the Service Center under Jim Houghton and his staff, it's very much at any given time, he can put his finger on performance measures to let us know in the district how things are going in a wide number of areas. He knows the hotspots and areas that need improvement and so forth. So we have some that are a mixture of annual measures and some that can be almost daily. And this also, you need to know, is still kind of a work in progress, that there are still divisions within this area that are doing action planning with Dr. Graham's help. And so more work will be done in the future and have that underneath it. The very first area is 7.1, which is the construction area. And one of the measures that we look at is the change orders. And are we keeping those to a percentage of the overall cost? And that goal is to be 1% or less. Those are tracked for you tonight in your packet. You have some change orders for woodland, and at the top of that page, it gives what the total is so far on that project and a percentage of the total construction. So that's pretty easy for us to measure. One of the things that might be more important even than change orders to track would be this idea of how much it costs to build per square foot. And this information has come to you before, but our school district not only builds more buildings because of our growth than almost anybody in the country, but we do it at a very efficient rate. And so that's something that we can, again, continue to monitor to make sure we're in that same measurement level, so that in the future, it will bear well for us. Next area is financial operations, 7.2 on your scorecard. And we look at cash balance. And specifically, the goal is that we'd like to be at 3% of our general fixed assets. This is one of those that currently is just an annual measure. And you'll know that when we finished the fiscal year in 2007, we were at 3.02, so we achieved that measure. Again, as we look at other measures that might be more important to us, we talk about the cash flow for operations during the school year, rather than just a percentage at the end of the school year. That's real important to us. And this next slide you've seen before, I call it the Hutchinson graph, because John's the one that came up with it. But what it does is, on a monthly basis, tracks our cash flow as a percentage of the cash that we started with for that school year. And so that's important. And you can see the very bottom line around November, December is for this past school year. And it is obviously a bigger dip than we've had the previous two years. So it is something that the business and finance likes to monitor so that we have enough money to meet operations. We also are focusing on energy management in this division. And again, you heard in an earlier board meeting from Bob Courtney, some wonderful measures that are taking place in this district to make us more efficient and to save money. The goal is that we want to have an increase in the number of buildings that meet energy goals. And the specific measure is that by the end of this year, 90% of the buildings will reach that goal. And again, I know there's a lot of talk about how can we continue to maintain our good cost per square foot in terms of energy savings. And it's becoming more and more difficult. That may have to be readjusted a little bit because, as you know, energy costs are continuing to climb. So no matter how much we can fight to keep it energy efficient, that's a battle that we're facing. The next area is 7.3, which deals with operational divisions. And the first one is workers' compensation. Again, kind of an interesting area, and there are five measures within this division that we're trying to look at and see how we're doing. The first is monitoring claims. And this past year, we had 4.3 claims per 100 employees, which is about the same as it was about five years ago. So it's maintaining that, at least. We also are looking at litigated cases, and the goal is to keep those below .04 per 100 employees. And this past year, it was .02, so they've done a good job at that. We also look at how much, how many claims we're having that cost over $10,000. These are all measured on a basis of per 100 employees, because, as you know, our staff changes each and every year, and we have more or less employees. And so to make that consistent, that's the way we look at it. But this past year, over the previous year, there was a decrease in the number of claims over $10,000. The next one is, we obviously want to look at the number of dollars spent, again, per 100 employees, and that was also down from the previous year. So that's positive. And finally, they look at the amount of savings that we can get from repricing, and what that is through contacts and through a network that they have when we need prescription drugs for a claim, when we need services from a doctor. By pricing that, we're able to save money over what the cost would be if you just walked into any place and got that service. So that's, again, real important. Again, on this one, the bigger question is, we are monitoring these claims and the numbers, but what are we doing to help in this area to maybe cut back on it? And this area does have a lot that they've got going. In the workers' comp program, they're really are focusing on safety. We want all of our employees to be safe, obviously, and if they have an injury, that we take care of it. But we're really looking maybe more in the future at looking at lost time. That's what's critical to the district in terms of losing money. One of the ways that they've improved to be proactive is last year, there was a focus on ergonomic safety. And in fact, Denise Carpenter was trained in this area and has gone and actually visited work sites. Physical changes have been made, so that, again, we're not just sitting back waiting for accidents to happen. She went and took a look at all the work areas and made suggestions for changes in chairs or supports and so forth. And so I think that's going to be real positive and pay off as she continues that this year. Likewise, one of the biggest areas we have in the district is slips and falls, and so they are trying some things to avoid some of that. Special shoes that they wear when they're finishing the gym floor, maybe working outside when it's snowed or there's ice. Better surfaces on the entryways that are a little bit rougher so that we don't slip. Again, things that are very proactive. The next area is that she has a checklist that she sends out to all schools as reminders, again, so that's before us all the time. And we're looking at ways that we can be safe and help our people not have accidents if we can do that. Another area that Denise has worked with the principals, and they've been very positive to work this out, is that we've been able to modify jobs sometimes so the employee can return earlier. That way, it helps on our claim and gets them back to work, and it's more positive for everybody all the way around. So from this, you can pick up that I really believe Denise Carpenter is doing a wonderful job for us. She also has a consortium that she's kind of put together. And so we talk, I think she said, almost daily with other school districts and businesses to kind of share ideas about ways that we can be safe and avoid claims. So it's a real positive area, and she's doing a fine job. 7.3, we come to operational divisions. And the first one is food service. And you're going to see a complete report from Scott Kingery in just a few minutes. One of the goals is to increase meal equivalents to 21,000 for this year. Meal equivalents would not only be that meal, but it's all the a la carte items that would go together to make an equivalency of a meal, so that we can have that count be that way. Another goal is to have a break-even program. The money that has to be put in by the district then is minimal, so that it's a standalone program, and we can focus on teaching and learning and not just feeding kids. And finally, it's another measure you'll hear from Scott is about maintaining a year-end balance of 3% over expenditures. And he's going to get into some of those numbers, and I'll let him do that. Another area is transportation, and we only have two measures on the report card, the scorecard for this. And that would be to have fewer accidents. And the number in '06, '07 was five, and the benchmark that had been set was six, so we're doing well there. There are some districts that, and again, it's all misfortune and accidents, but so far, we've done extremely well with this. Another way that we may look in the future, in terms of more measures, would be some of the efficiencies that we can have in terms of fuel efficiency to monitor, and maybe even the whole system of pay to ride in terms of whether it's working out or not. We turn to fiscal responsibility, Item 7.4 on the scorecard. And the first is to share a little bit that these areas are some of those that I mentioned that are a little bit harder to impact monthly. And I'll show some examples. One of them on there is that we monitor our new student headcount. That's not something we can really change next month. It is what it is in the terms of the number of kids we get, but it's one of the measures we currently have and we're monitoring. Another one would be to monitor the number of gifts and grants. And as you know, of course, we can monitor, but that's really dependent upon the source and whether we are awarded those grants. Another area that's there is that we're to maintain the audit exceptions. The audit only happens once a year, so it's nothing that we can necessarily do next month. But obviously, through our procedures, we're able to hopefully keep that at zero in terms of audit exceptions. And it has been that way in this district for the past five or six years. Another one on there, the measure, is to increase the bond rating, and that's something we all have an interest in. And the interest is, because it obviously benefits the district very much, it's a financial benefit to us when we go out for bonds if we can pay a lower interest rate. Some ways that we can do that are really a part of this big picture that we're looking at: enhancing and stabilizing reserves, regular economic reviews, which we're putting in place in some places, formalized capital improvement plan, which we have, established benchmarks and priorities. That's part of the strategic plan that's a part of this review. So things that maybe in the future will help make that rating even more favorable than it is for our district. Coming back to more fiscal responsibility, we monitor the budget per pupil for the state average. How do we stack up with all the school districts in the state? On your scorecard, you can see that, that from the last year and the year before, you do need to note that one is budgeted and one is actual. That's why that's, looks like it's 12% higher on last year's, because that was still a budgeted amount and not actual. That comes from the state of Kansas, and we don't have those numbers from their calculations yet. We obviously would internally. And as you know, when we put together a budget, we have to plan for authority in case we grow even more. And so that's why that budgeted amount would be higher than the actual from the year before. We also are monitoring the meal level stability in a supportive education. That's a real focus for you and has been in the time that I've been here. Your goal is set that it would be within a 3% frame, in terms of up or down, that you can monitor and keep that stable for the public. We also look in fiscal responsibility at maintaining that contingency, which we did again for this past year. It's set by the state of Kansas at 6%. Monitor cost avoidance. This is listed on that scorecard. It's money that's not necessarily saved in our pocket, but it is money that we avoid paying through various ways. Where that's going to come up, again, probably maybe even more important is through Dr. All. We have started an efficiency study, and this where there will, where there will be some actual savings, we hope, not just avoiding costs, but there will be some savings by ways that we can come up about being more efficient in our school district. As I get ready to ask if you have any questions about running through these divisions, very quickly, I will remind you about the process that's in place and being worked on currently to make this a part of the website and very transparent for our public. Right now, that committee is looking at best practices on websites, which is very important, that we might pick up something that would work. There has to be some technical work, which I couldn't explain if you asked me to, in terms of some of the flash things that need to be done. But it's my understanding, on our front page, where it is about us, that tab that you can click, it will include a very detailed profile of our district. But then you can go from there into some of the links, which would have our key indicators and our measures. And so I really think they talk about, on any key measure and a link, that there'll be historical graphs as well, so that if a person really wants to get lost in our website and look at all kinds of graphs and data about our measures of performance in the past years, that it will be available for them to look at. With that, and being backed up by any of the divisions that are sitting out here in the audience, I would take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Barry. Other questions or comments from board members?
Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Just like to comment, a great, a great piece of data and great work on behalf of the staff to bring this to this point in time.
I think that's the key. There are a lot of staff members that are working pretty hard at this, to put action plans together. As Dr. Graham says, it is not a strategic plan that's going to sit on a shelf someplace, that the goal is to keep working. So these are measures that we're aware of each and every day. So it's been real positive.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barry. Agenda Item 2.02, dealing with district food service. And Scott Kingery is going to make this presentation. Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to start my presentation this evening by first sharing food services' mission. Our mission is to provide nutritious, appealing, and affordable meals, so students are prepared to learn. And as we talk about nutritious meals, it's important to understand the types of meals that we serve in the district. Basically, two categories of meals. One is our school meal, which we serve at both breakfast and lunch, and at our elementary and our secondary schools. And then there's an optional menu that we serve at our secondary schools, which is our a la carte menu. School meals, also known as reimbursable meals, type A meals, or A lunch, they all meet strict nutritional standards established by the National School Lunch Program and Breakfast Program, as analyzed over the course of a school week. And the nutritional standards are listed there. Addresses total calories from fat and saturated fat, addresses a lot of vitamins, minerals, includes fiber, and also sodium and cholesterol. Now, when we talk about our menus and whether they're nutritious, it's important to understand that when you look at our menus, they're not actually what they might seem nutritionally. Many of the entrees that might ordinarily seem unhealthful actually have improved nutritional profiles. Given a couple of examples here, our pizza, for instance, has increased protein, increased fiber, reduced fat, reduced sodium. The cheeseburgers that we serve include 50% reduced-fat cheese. The hamburger patty has nine grams of fat, giving the cheeseburger only 14 grams of fat compared to 26 grams of fat that you would find in a comparable-sized cheeseburger at a restaurant. The district no longer has any fryers at any of our school kitchens. We never have had in our elementary schools. But we have been phasing our fryers out over the past few years at our secondary schools, and that's been, was complete this past summer. So all of our foods are either baked or steamed now in the school district. With our school meals, we also serve all you care to eat, fruits and vegetables. And we only serve skim and 1% milk with our school meals. When we talk about the a la carte menu, USDA's nutritional standards provide a lot more leeway in this area than they do for the school meals. However, the district's Nutrition and Wellness Council has put together nutritional standards with which the a la carte menu does comply. And those standards address portion size. They have to be the same as our school meals. We offer fruits and vegetables daily. If we offer yogurt, it needs to be nonfat or low-fat. And of all the other items that we offer, at least 50% have to meet the following criteria for fat and sugar. The beverages that we serve in our a la carte menu are limited to water, milk with 360 calories or less per serving, 100% juice. And if we offer an electrolyte replacement beverage, they're to contain no more than 48 grams of sweetener for a 20-out selling unit. The other part of what we're tasked to do is to provide appealing meals. Our menus are planned to appeal to student customers. So the low-fat, low-sodium, high-fiber qualities aren't necessarily marketed to our student customers. That's not something that most students are out there to eat. And in order to get them to eat with us, we don't play that up a whole lot. But it is important information. It's important for the parents, and it's important for the community to know what's really behind our menus nutritionally. And we're doing a better job of letting that secret out through our newsletters from the schools and the menus that we send home with the students. We maintain a constant effort to keep our menus current and appealing to our student customers. We monitor meal counts to reveal trends and menu preferences. We monitor food trends in the retail food service arena. We try to mimic a lot of things that the retail market is doing, except a little better nutritionally, at a better price. And we also simply just talk to the customer, both informally and formally. Formally, at our elementary schools, we have established a Student Nutrition Advisory Council, which includes about 50 students from across the school district that we meet with three to four times a year. At secondary schools, our cafe managers meet with their student councils throughout the year. And one of our biggest challenges in providing appealing meals is because of the sheer numbers that we're trying to serve. The time allowed to serve our student customers is very limited. On average, a quick-serve restaurant serves one customer every two minutes. On average, we serve one customer every six seconds. It's quite challenging to try to meet the expectations of student customers that are used to being able to get customized meals at restaurants when we're faced with the timeless limitations that we are. This chart just shows our average total meals per day over the past six years. You can see the upward trend there. And again, this is our total meals, including our school meals and our a la carte meals. A lot of things have to be considered when providing appealing meals. One of those things is to minimize our impact on the environment. Being a food service operation, a significant amount of solid waste is generated through food packaging and disposable tableware. This concerns a very high priority issue that's being currently studied by the District's Committee on Environmental Issues to determine best practices and alternatives. A lot of the perceptions of what is affordable in a school meal is based on some misconceptions about how food services operates. Most people don't understand that food services operates financially separate from the school district, that all of our operational expenses, including our salaries, benefits, food supplies, utilities, everything, is paid by food services from the sale of food. We don't receive any free food or commodities from the government. What we do receive is a reimbursement for each meal that we serve to a student. And explanation of the way this works is, a secondary student school meal costs us approximately $2.75 to produce and serve, considering all the operational expenses that I just mentioned above. Now, the state and federal governments then provide us with approximately $0.75 in reimbursement, so in turn, we can reduce the price to a student to $2. And that explains why an adult meal is, costs $2.75 when the portion size is the same as a high school student, because we don't receive that reimbursement for an adult meal. Food service is basically a $10 million a year kid-friendly restaurant chain with over 300 employees and 47 locations. We operate as any other successful business does, balancing expenditures and revenues, with one primary difference. It's not our It's not our goal to generate a profit. Our goal is to break even at the end of the fiscal year. This graph shows the challenges that food services has had over the past few years in maintaining a zero cash balance at the end of the school year. And you can see in the year 2002-03, we turned that around financially in food services. And again, last year was a challenge year, because of some salaries that hadn't normally been charged to food services were charged at the end of the year, and we really didn't have time to address those in our operations. This chart just shows our comparison of our expenditures and revenues on a monthly basis for last year, just an example of the dozens of pages of financial data we review on a monthly basis to make sure we stay on the right track financially. Keeping prices affordable has obviously been challenging, but I think we've done a good job. Our school meal prices haven't increased for five years. This year, we increased a few of our à la carte prices, but up until this year, they hadn't increased since 2005. And with all of the increased operational costs that we've had with salary increases each year, fuel costs, food costs, all of those costs going up, that's been balanced with increased efficiencies in labor and production processes and waste reduction. Waste reduction is certainly a key element to that, and this slide just shows the à la carte waste that we monitor. We monitor waste in a lot of different areas. This is just an example of what we do to minimize that. Keeping prices affordable certainly been a challenge. This year has been even more of a challenge. We've seen unprecedented price increases this year. Gasoline prices affect the entire food chain, whether it's from the producer in the field to the distributor, the processors. They're all taking on additional costs because of fuel, which is obviously being passed on to us. The cost of food containing corn, corn products, or using corn for livestock feed, all those products have increased in price because of corn being diverted to the production of ethanol fuel. And because the price of corn, wheat products have gone up because more land is being used for corn production, leaving less land for wheat production, driving our wheat prices up. Cost of milk and milk products have increased 50% over last year's costs. We took a full 50% increase on our milk products. Projecting this year's usage, we believe we will spend an additional $140,000 to purchase just our half-pint chocolate skim milk. Affordable meals are going to be costing more. To maintain a break-even food service budget, a school meal price for next year will be necessary. We don't have the full analysis complete, but in the next few weeks, we should have that done. But we are going to be looking at probably a 10- to 20 cent per meal increase for our school lunch. I know this is a real quick overview, a lot of information, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kingery. Any questions or comments? Mr. Pollan?
Just looking at the one slide showing the increase of students serve, or meals served per day, do you anticipate a limitation to the facilities we have in the near future? And if so, would it be due to the facilities itself or the ability to supply meals, or would it be a transportation issue?
There are some facility limitations just because of the size of the kitchen, the space available, especially in some of the older designs. But other than that, the capacity of the food production center is still there. I don't believe that there'll be any limitations in the near future.
Looking at the slide that tracked expenditures and revenues over the year, it looked like there were like just three months where revenues exceeded expenditures, and I just wondered, are those typical months or reasons, or you don't necessarily know what's going to be what?
It's really difficult, just because of the way our invoices actually hit the system, which month they fall in. So we really have to look at trends over a number of years to even out those differences.
As I recall, we purchase our milk and beverages based on an annual contract. Is that not right?
Yes, that's correct.
Do we do that for lots of other items related to the food purchases?
All of our food and supplies is bid on an annual basis.
That sure helps you to control the cost at least through the year.
Yeah. And unfortunately, there are some times that a distributor cannot hold that price. Since I put this presentation together, I've received information that because of pork crops, apples, peaches, and pineapple, those prices are going to be going way up. Pineapple, for instance, we've had to reduce the number of times we have it on the menu because of the price increase of 60%.
Well, those restaurants that you're competing and comparing to throughout Alitha, based on what I see, the competition's getting steeper and steeper, because there's more and more of those restaurants popping up. But thank you very much for all that you do for our students. It's a very informative presentation, and we appreciate your oversight and management of all this. And are there any other questions or comments? Ms. Wilholt?
I assume you're probably anticipating that the expenditures will be larger than the revenues this year, just from what you're looking at.
Yes, yes.
10- to 20 cent increase, you're anticipating that that will then even out our balance for the following year?
That is the hope. We have to look at a lot of different things. Growth certainly plays into the amount of revenue we get, but the 10- to 20 cents per meal, along with probably some à la carte pricing changes, it would be our hope that would be a break-even budget next year.
Have we traditionally held then in five-year cycles for the increase in the cost for meals?
No, actually, I believe historically, at least since '94, it's been maybe every other year, every third year that we've taken an increase. We've just been able to hold those prices for five years this year up to this point. But because of these unprecedented cost increases, we're going to have to take a sizable increase.
I'd just like to add a comment. One of the reasons we've been able to hold prices for five years is Scott Kingery, because in his leadership in that area, bringing efficiencies, and this is prior to any efficiency study that I'm launching, that's our best practices there, and he's looked very closely at operations. He's got a lot of skills in that area, and every time, we don't have to transfer dollars to food service, that keeps dollars in the classroom. And so that's a very important point that he's made, and no one likes to increase prices. But I think he is being challenged, and I think his case is very clear. We're seeing it in our own homes and other places as well. And unfortunately, he has a business that he's operating and does it well, but we're going to have to continue to take a good look at the future of food service and the impact that all these external changes are making, you know, on how we're operating.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item 2.03 on Growth and Facilities Impact Plan. Chris Grollop is here to make this presentation.
Okay, as Mr. Gilmore said, we're here tonight to talk about the Growth and Facility Impact Plan that was given out to the board at their special meeting on the 16th. And then there's some updates that were provided for you tonight about junior high information and the balance score, or the growth scorecard as well. What we'd like to do tonight is just kind of walk through some of the information that's in the Growth and Facility Plan, because over the past year, it's gone, undergone a lot of changes in the past, since September of last year when we first produced it. This is the third version of the plan there, and each version has kind of had some big differences to create, to try to create a document that really speaks to all the areas of growth and how our facilities are used and how different programs that will use space in our facilities. Kind of the centerpiece of the Growth and Facilities Plan is there are two pages, there's space analysis sheets for every elementary and junior high school in the district. And what those pages look at is, one, they look at the current enrollment of a school, and we're just going to kind of use Black Bob Elementary, walk through that as an example. The information is standard for all the elementary schools in there, but we try to give, we give the current enrollment of the school and then try to put that in a historical context. And so for Black Bob, you can see it's at 478 students this year. Its historical low is 396 students, its historical high is 780 students. Its capacity right now is at 84%, its room usage 103. We also kind of show what's happened over the past five years, recent trends at the school, plus five years out of what we think is going to happen at the school there. And as you can see, from 2006 to 2007, there was a 55 student, excuse me, a 45-student increase, which was due to a program change, which is one of the areas that has a large impact on enrollment. And we feel that due to that program change, enrollments are going to stay at a higher level than they've been for the past five years. In addition to that, we start looking at how the building is used. There are three kind of areas that use up space in a building. There are, first of all, looking at the school information there, that the building was built, the Black Bob's about a 30-year-old school, and that time, it's been added on to twice. None of the wet areas are, have been built in. There are 22 sections of K-6 education there, and there are 23 classrooms, so we've got everybody in classrooms there. And then part of that, we've divided, looked at the spaces that are in a building, classroom spaces, half a classroom space, and then quarter of a classroom space, which would really be about an office-sized space at schools. And so, as we were saying, there's kind of, there are three areas or three reasons that a building might need additional space. One is equity of spaces. As part of the work on the bond last year, there was kind of a renewed emphasis on looking at equity. And what, and what creates equity in buildings, what is that kind of definition? And so we came up with space standards for all the programs that are in our school. And at Black Bob, this is, right now, this slide is a partial list of all the programs that are at school. And you can see for art, for example, at Black Bob, it's in a classroom, so it meets our space standards for it. There's band, computer labs, music, a counselor, occupational therapy, physical therapy, Quest, resource. There's actually two resource rooms. The second resource room meets in an off, in an office-sized space, which wouldn't meet our space requirements, a conference room. The psych, social worker, the no there means that there isn't an assigned space for that, for that, for the, for those people there. They meet where there's space in the building there. An empty classroom here, an empty office there, the conference room during some period of the day. And then the speech, there's one speech teacher at Black Bob. They are in a half-sized office space, which actually exceeds our standards. In addition to those programs at Black Bob, there's also two ELL instructors there, an interpreter, reading assistants, and then they've also using an office space for some storage. So we show that in a graphical format in the notebook, as well as in a, I mean, in a tabular format as well as a graphical format. You can see there, for instance, the resource room, there's one resource room there and this half-sized office, half-sized classroom space there, as well as the other resource room in this office. The two ELL programs, they had two ELL instructors, they are sharing one classroom space over here. Quest in this half-sized classroom up there. Onto the side of the graph, there are the psych and so, the psych, social worker, and the interpreter. Again, as we said, there's no assigned space for those, so we just set those off to the side of the building footprint. The other thing that use, or factor in space is academic program growth. Right now, there are 91 students that receive ELL services at Black Bob. And from talking with the folks in ELL, that that number's expected to grow, there'll be a need for an additional ELL instructor in the next five years at Black Bob, based on their forecasts. There are 18 students right now that receive, that live in the Black Bob attendance area that go to some other school to, that receive early childhood develop, or with disability services. And there are going to be needs for more, as we've talked about throughout the, this year, the growth in early childhood with disabilities, there's always a continual need for more programs in really all areas of the district. And then there are seven students that have a wide variety of, that receive a wide variety of sped services that also live in its attendance area. The third area that we're very familiar with in the Alitha School District is growth. Within the Black Bob attendance area, there really isn't any enrollment growth, I mean, residential growth. There's one unbuilt lot in its attendance area, there are only two undeveloped acres. We're not expecting there to be a lot of new homes being built in the Black Bob attendance The other area to look at is, that we've kind of talked about, is how our younger grades are our biggest grades, and in elementary school, that's the kindergarten, and our later grades, the sixth graders are usually our biggest grades. And so what we have on this, on the space analysis sheets is detailed information for four years out, looking at what we project classroom size, what enrollments are going to be, and what we expect the number of actual sections or classrooms to be. And what we've added here is just kind of a district guidelines for class sizes to kind of talk a little bit about the difference between capacity and room utilization. We've kind of already shown you room utilization going use by use through the school, but looking here at third grade at Black Bob Elementary School, you can see that they've got, and this is actually, they've got 24 students in a grade, in each class, excuse me, 72 students per grade, and I actually made a correction there, that should be, for the guideline, this should be 25 students, I apologize for that. But they've got 24 students per class right now. And so for third grade, there could be three third graders that move into Black Bob Elementary that wouldn't, that would, that we would have room for. More than that, we're exceeding our guidelines for third graders. But you go to fourth graders, again, this should be 25 for a guideline, there's room for 16 students to move in for fourth graders. And so when we talk about buildings having space in terms of capacity, it really comes down to having space for the right type of students. You could put 70 more students in Black Bob, but you would have to put the absolute right 70 students in there. As we illustrated before, you picked the wrong three students, and all of a sudden, we're over our classroom guidelines there. So the two measures of room utilization and, room utilization and capacity kind of work together to try to give a picture, a complete picture of how full a school is. Those two, looking at one measure or the other measure, tends to, might give you a false impression of what's happening at the school. At the bottom of every page is a, is kind of, is a summary for the space analysis, and as we talked about, the equity. From looking at that, what we were saying they need is, would be one-half classroom and two-quarter classrooms to adequately put programs in appropriate spaces. Academic growth, looking at what growth is anticipated through sped, ELL, reading, reading and math assistance, all these academic support programs. A need for additional, one additional classroom and a half-sized classroom. And then enrollment growth, a need for one additional classroom to stay within size guidelines. In addition to that, very detailed look at a school, there are, there are many different other ways in the notebook to get the information. There's also the growth scorecard, which looks at a school and kind of gives you a quick shot of information there. At Black Bob Elementary, you'll see that it's an elementary school. Again, the 90% capacity, room utilization, what its enrollment is now, what it's projected to be in five years, and then how many rooms it's going to need and why it needs those rooms. Enrollment growth, academic growth, and equity of spaces at Black Bob. Or another way to get that information is in the back of the book, there are 18 maps that cover a wide range of information. One of the maps looks at elementary space needs, and then you can see that there's a need for additional space at Black Bob with the green dot there. The bigger the dot, the more space they need. The junior highs have similar information in terms of current enrollment. The junior highs have similar information in terms of current enrollment, putting that in the same context. Building usage gets a lot more complicated at junior high schools, unlike elementary schools where you get a class, stays in that class all, for, for all day. Here, you've got seven hours of a day, you've got team teaching, you've got planning periods, you've got all these other things going on. So what we try to do is break down information on room usage hour by hour, based on the master schedule that, that the principals develop each year. We also divide up the classes based on different types, whether it's an elective or whether it's a core subject, whether it's something that is an academic support program such as Read 180 or PACE, or whether it's something like Spanish or a foreign language is kind of more in a classroom, could, doesn't really have kind of a similar classroom subject. Or a lab, something like a computer lab, where you're really limited not by the number of people in it, but how many computers. Obviously, having a computer class and having 25 computers and 30 kids in there doesn't do some kid, doesn't do the five kids without computers a lot of good. Then looking at enrollment growth, again, same information about development, but within, with junior highs, what we also look at is the feeder patterns, to look at what's in, Black Bob feeds the Frontier Trail. So look at the four schools that feed Frontier Trail and see what their class sizes are to help project and show why growth is happening at a particular junior high school. So in conclusion, the, the growth and facilities plan is an administrative tool that can be used across all divisions for a wide variety of things, staffing levels, planning levels, budgeting. It's updated annually after the September 20th numbers. Everything in the notebook there tonight is based off of enrollments as of September 20th. So as you can imagine, we've been working fairly hard to update the 12,000-plus data points that are in that notebook in the past month and a half. And so with this notebook, we hope to get data-driven decisions guided by board policies and priorities.
Thank you, Chris. Other questions or comments?
Chris, a great presentation. This continues to be a great tool for us. We have been talking here over the past year or so about incorporating some early child development diagnostics by school, for those that have that. What's the plans to try and get that kind of information included in those schools that have those programs?
To have information, well, we've added some things to the balance scorecard. It gets to be difficult to project on early childhood by schools because from working with, with Aaron Dugan and Carol Alfelder, they project their need based on an area, the southeast area, the northeast area, the southwest area. And so to actually project out early childhood by school creates some difficulties, there's some transition issues to do that.
A couple of things, could we designate on the scorecards which of those schools have early childhood development programs in them? And then are we able to forecast by zone then, just to give some type of insight as to what may need to happen?
We do do that on the map, there's a map for early childhood in the back of the notebook that does forecast by zone. On the ballot, on the bottom of the second page of the balance scorecard, we do that as well, by zone. The map on the, and I believe it's about map eight in the back in the map glossary shows all the schools with early childhood, as well as the need by area. Map seven, excuse me. And then at the bottom of the growth scorecard in the second page, there was included this year a table that has the additional rooms needed by quadrants.
Any further questions or comments from the board? All right, thank you, Chris. Appreciate that presentation, we know that's a lot of work. Agenda item 2 dot 04, dealing with state and federal legislative positions for 2008, and Dr. Gary George is going to make introductory remarks on this item.
Okay, thank you, and good evening. The positions that you have in your packet are basically the updated positions that we have had, we've cleaned them up a little bit editorially, and then you can see the new positions that have been added. And I want to thank our board officers who assisted in meeting and, and working on this. But we have the additional positions that have been added, and there, you have both state and then there are some federal positions that are also in your packet. So our plan is that we present these in November, we do not take any action in November, but at the December meeting, we will need to take action. And then we have our legislative breakfast where we'll be visiting with our congressional, or legislative delegation, our state legislative delegation coming up in December after our December board meeting. And so it'll give us an opportunity to share those positions with them. With that, I'll pause and, and see if there are questions or additional input that we have this evening.
Let me just add to Dr. George's remarks, that Ms. Ashley and I have been, have worked on this, kind of on all of our collective comments over the past year, and we've tried to incorporate everything we could remember between Dr. George and Dr. All and ourselves. So this is by no means a final document, we want your feedback and input so that we can finalize it for our next meeting. So if there's any comments, or you think anything that might need to be reworked, or reworded, or changed in any way, please feel free to comment on that tonight, that's why we're here.
Mr. Churchman?
Mr. Gilmore, thank you very much, and Dr. George. Under funding, item number 11, ancillary weighting, is that targeted towards the BODA issue that we had previously discussed?
It is.
Okay. One of the recommendations that I would have on that is that, do we need to specifically call out BODA so that the legislators know exactly what it is that we're referring to on there?
We can get that in there so that the Board attacks appeals, so there's no question about it.
And then item number seven, which talks about the second enrollment account, how important is it to be more specific about a timeline in the year? I know we had previously broadly discussed the February timeframe, to be more specific about when that date should be.
We could try to use the same date that exists in legislation now for those districts immediately around Fort Riley, and I believe that is February 1st, but I could check that statute, and, and we could try to mirror that, that date so that there's not inconsistencies in the statute.
I think that would make sense. And then the item that talks about number nine, the board supports greater flexibility for use of unexpendanted funds at the end of the year, is that the item that is in reference to consolidation of cash reserve accounts?
It would allow for some consolidation and, and flexibility in use or transferring there. There may be some that would be restricted either by state statute or because they're already obligated such as bond and interest or something like that. But there may, to the extent there could be some flexibility, that's the intent of that particular item.
All right, good. Well, what I'd like to offer up is that we be more specific on that particular category. And you're absolutely right in that there are those accounts that are restricted by statute, but if we were more specifics and said something to the extent that of the 27 accounts that exist, we would like to have that consolidated down to something more in the magnitude of four to five, or whatever would be appropriate, just to manage our expectations to the legislative body. Along that same line, open up to the board here, I know a lot of work has gone into this, and I appreciate that. I still think it would be beneficial to us, would welcome discussion on coming up with a list, whether it's five or six, or whatever that appropriate number is, of our top priorities that really represent those actions that we would like to be addressed in this upcoming session, and then take the remaining items that are more just affirmation of some of our fundamental beliefs, and put those behind them in a, in a separate document. And the point being that we'd like to be able to convey to our legislators that here are our priorities for the upcoming session that we'd like to have focus on. And I think it might, might put a little bit more of a, of a impetus behind what we're trying to do here.
Excellent idea, Mr. Churchman, I'd agree with that. And I think we would want to start with bilingual and special education and at-risk funding at the top of the list, albeit that would be open for discussion on, on behalf of the board, but I think that would be an excellent idea and a great suggestion.
So along those lines, if we were to maybe characterize it or title it as our 2008 priorities, and then certainly give some kind of lead into the remainder of the document is the fact that we, we don't want to lessen those in any degree. But some of these are just ongoing beliefs that are reaffirmed year over year, some of them are, are different, but to the extent that we can differentiate them, I think that would bode well for us.
I'd like to suggest that, I like the idea of prioritizing some of these in terms of, you know, sometimes when we hand legislators this long list, it's like they think we're asking for the moon all the time. And all of these things are important to us, but I think maybe going down to a handful that are most important, that we want to always emphasize whenever we speak to our legislators and our elected representatives, is, I think is a good idea. How we come up with that is the next step, and I guess I would suggest, prior to our next meeting, that we all communicate with Dr. All what we think those priorities are so that she can work with Dr. George and accumulate those, and also, Dr. All, your, your feedback on that issue as well. And then hopefully we can come to a more final conclusion at a December meeting, if we tweak it a little bit, that's fine, the staff I think can make some changes to it at that point, and we can hopefully vote on it and move on. But I think that's a good suggestion.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to get one clarification. Are you maybe suggesting we do a little format change here as well, or code this in some way? I'm just trying to look for a plan that would maybe match that for clarity.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, some of the items that are on here, obviously, we believe in, we support, but they're, they're going to take some time, and they're items that we have been pressing over the years and continue to do so, but then there are those that we would like to truly see accomplished during the next legislative session, so.
So more time-sensitive, those things that we, we think are doable and immediate, and those things that over time would be, one way we would look at prioritization.
That's great, yeah.
The other way we might look at it also in terms of working with the business department is which of the revenue options there make the most impact for Aletha based on our needs and demographics as a growing school district, which there may be a laundry list there of all those things that are important to us, but some may be more strategic for us than others. So we'll try to get some additional data on that.
I think that's a great point, particularly as we've seen some of the dilution of the Johnson County money here over the past year, to the extent that we can differentiate what our priorities are, it will stand out more.
George, I had a question that you may or may not be able to answer tonight. When we first talked about the second enrollment count date at a meeting, I forget how long ago it was, but there was some news coverage of that in the paper, and someone from the Department of Education in the state responded that one of their concerns was duplication of headcount in that process. What's our response to that, or how do we, how do we minimize that concern?
Well, some of the students that come to our district do come from other Kansas districts. However, we also have students coming from homeschool, private schools, and from across the ocean. They've military people or whatever, somebody's transferred in, or they've gone to work for an engineering company or whatever, and they've previously lived in a, another country in the world, and they're new to Kansas, and they're certainly new to our district. And we can look at that data and break that down and get that data. The other issue is that we had tried to, last year, and the part of the Senate legislation was to soften that a little bit by only counting the students that were new, and only counting them for a half of year. So we were only going to get the count for the second semester. So it wasn't like the state was paying double for the whole year, although in some cases we got the student on September 21st and educated them for virtually the entire fall semester and the entire spring semester, we were only asking for funding for the second semester. And that did pass the Senate, unfortunately, it wasn't successful in the House.
And is that process really any different, though, than what we go through on the 20th of September, when they work to make sure that they're not double counting a student from one district to the other?
The, it's, it'd be very similar. The state doesn't want to pay, pay twice. There's also a few cases where the state doesn't pay at all, when students are in transit on the 20th, and, and that gets to be kind of a complicated situation. But we, the, our, our thought, and I think the thought of the Senate, was that if it were limited to the second year, it would minimize the cash expenditure on the part of the state of Kansas, and at the same time, address a need in very rapidly growing districts, whether they were around the Fort Riley or in other districts that were growing very rapidly.
I guess I'd like some clarification in talking about reformatting. Are we suggesting maybe then that we would do away with the current headings that we have, and take all of these together and prioritize them? Is, is that the, the gist of what we're saying?
That's not what I'm proposing. I think the document as it exists today can remain as is. We just simply put a cover sheet on it that says priority objectives for the upcoming legislative session, or something to that nature.
And so we can give Dr. All something that she can, that can be useful, should we all like list our top 10 priorities so that she can then come up with a list of maybe five or six?
Maybe we better not do that many.
So that we're all doing it in a consistent manner? Does that make sense?
Maybe top five or six.
Well, so you can come up with five, we, because we won't all agree, so if we list maybe our top 10, then you can come up with a list of probably five.
Yeah, I, I don't have an objection to rank ordering top 10, I mean, we may focus on only the first five or six, see what's consensus there is on that, and.
That's what I mean, if each of us list our top 10. Surely we'll have some consistency there probably, that we can come up with five.
Be good. Why don't we, as, as set an objective to try to have that to Dr. All before the end of next week, so that, will that work, Dr. George, in terms of timeframe to accumulate?
That should work, yeah.
Okay, good, good comments. Anything else?
All right, thank you, Dr. George.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work on that.
Dr. All, just one question concerning this, I'm assuming that input from the staff will come back to you also on this information. I actually would like to see the prioritization that the staff has with this information. I know they deal with these programs extensively, and sometimes our perception may be, my perception may be more global than it would be in specific areas.
I would take that in account. If I felt that there was some information that staff were saying to me that we needed to bring to the board's attention, that you might not be aware of in terms of its importance or priority, I would see that as my responsibility as the education piece back to the board to say, even though these are your top 10, here's something that we're worried about or concerned about, I'd like to explain that, and then see if that is something that you can support. So would be happy to try to pull those two together.
All right, thank you all. Item 2 dot 05 relating to the sales tax update, and Dr. All is going to make some remarks about this item.
At the October 16th special board meeting where we spent an evening looking at forecasting our revenues out over the next couple of years, as well as our expenditures through 2009 and 10, one of the items that came up for discussion that night was some direction to me to provide the board with some additional information about what the board's options might be related to the Johnson County Economic Development Grant, sometimes referred to as the quarter cent sales tax, that's currently going to school districts. That economic development grant tax has been a part of our programs and services for the last five years. That tax will sunset December 2008. Johnson County Commissioners have, on September 6th, passed a resolution to have that tax go towards the building of a jail, other justice-related facilities, and other public safety identified needs. Their intent on that tax would run for 10 years with an additional 10-year renewal period. And so what that does for Aletha, as I've discussed with you before, is that effective the 2009, 2010 school year, is that the $5.4 million that we're currently receiving from that economic development grant for schools in Johnson County will not be part of our budget. So in looking at options for the board, I work with staff, Dr. George, and then also legal counsel Scott Mason, and, and also our attorney, to look at any possible options, and these are just options. I'm not laying them out for board direction at this point, but to get some feedback from you. There are two methods that we could get a question on the ballot. There are two methods that we could get a question on the ballot. One of those was used, I believe, the first and second times that was on the ballot, and that is if there's a resolution passed by a two-thirds majority of a governing body of each taxing subdivision. It sounds complicated. What it means is that it would require either Olathe or Shawnee Mission and Blue Valley to have both of their Boards of Education pass the resolution.
If I may interrupt you just a second, this is an issue that's probably going to take longer than the time we have before our next set of events, so why don't we delay this till after the presentations and public comments section? If, I think that'd be a better use of our time. Let's take a 10-minute comfort break, and then we'll come back with our recognitions and awards, and then our public comments section. I'd like to call our meeting back to order. It's that time in our agenda where we deal with recognitions and awards, and Laura Lee, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. We'd like to welcome our special guests and their families and friends and fans, and I'd like to mention that when I call your name, please come forward right down the center aisle so you don't trip over any equipment over here. We'll begin with business partnerships and ask Mr. Jim Smith, our Director of Community Development, to assist with those recognitions. We want to start with Angel Mercier. I understand she has to leave and get back to work tonight, so if Angel's here, we're going to do you first. This is a business recognition of a business partnership with the Arts and Education Program at the Carlson Center and the Johnson County Community College. The Arts and Education Program has a long-term relationship with our district and other Johnson County schools and provides opportunities for students to attend special productions at the Carlson Center. Since 2000, they've underwritten over $13,000 of performances and given financial support to cover busing, tickets, and outreach sessions for our students. More than half of our elementary and junior high schools have been included. Angel Mercier is Director of the Arts Education Program, which offers lecture demonstrations, master classes, and workshops for students, as well as teacher workshops in the arts. Tonight, we're presenting a certificate of recognition to Angel for all of her hard work and support, and a partnership recognition to the Arts Education Program at the Carlson Center as a partner. Congratulations. You can go. Now, we'd like to recognize Paul Marsh and the Bass Pro Shop. Is Paul here? I think you've been here before, haven't you? Bass Pro Shop has been a district partner since its opening with our School Plus programs, and they recently helped to provide gift certificates for auction and all the food for School Plus kids and their families at the Lights On Event on October 17th. This event is held annually to raise awareness of before and after-school programs. Bass Pro has committed to providing $1,000 scholarships to each School Plus site on a semester basis. Tonight, they're presenting a $4,000 check to Kathy Mangino, our School Plus facilitator, for scholarships at Washington, Central, Westview, and Fairview Elementary Schools for the fall semester, and the award will be repeated in the spring. We would like to thank Bass Pro for their commitment to School Plus. And we're keeping the big check. Now, we'd like to recognize Cold Stone Creamery, Corey Brown owner and K. Brits General Manager. Cold Stone Creamery is the ice cream business with a mission to make people happy. They believe it's important to give back to the community and support good causes, including school fundraisers, charitable organizations, and the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Tonight, we welcome Corey Brown, owner, and K. Brits, General Manager, as we celebrate the district's partnership with the Cold Stone Creamery. As a district partner, they will help with friends and family nights, grab-and-go coupons, gift certificates, and other events. Please join us in showing our appreciation for this partnership. And now, we'd like to recognize a special lady from the K-State Research and Extension Office in Johnson County, Nancy Carr, School Enrichment Coordinator. Where did you get that suit? We're all familiar with our Johnson County K-State Research and Extension Office and the multitude of programs and services that they offer to residents of Johnson County. This evening, we're proud to recognize Nancy Carr, who's their School Enrichment Coordinator and has been for almost 19 years. Nancy uses research-based information and hands-on education for our kids, such as the Chicken Embryology and Butterfly Garden Kits, which are perfect for studying life cycles. She partnered with Bear Corporation on Making Science Make Sense in the classroom to increase students' enthusiasm for exploring science, and sometimes she arrives with a mobile dairy demo, which is a 36-foot trailer with milking equipment and a cow. We are presenting a certificate of recognition to Nancy for her many years of service to the children of Olathe District Schools. Congratulations. Now, we'd like to recognize Lynn Meredith with HSC Media. Olathe High School football games were on the radio this year with a full slate of games from HSC Media. And, I'm sorry, and Jim Ader, our Director of Athletics and Activities. The football games were broadcast live by experienced announcers Mike Snow and Lynn Meredith, and included 30-minute pre-game show, coaches and players' comments, special features, and a post-game show. Lynn was responsible for this special opportunity for Olathe Sports, purchasing airtime from HCS and raising his own sponsorships for the program. Jim Ader, who's our District Director of Athletics and Activities, says it's been wonderful, and now he wants to do basketball as well. So please join us in thanking Lynn Meredith and HSC Media for partnering with our Olathe High School sports program. We have a number of people now who are graduating tonight, our Citizens Education Academy. And I'm going to call out, just come on down, I'm going to call out all your names. Jerry Baker, Marlon Berry, who is also the facilitator, Gloria Clark, Erica Darrington, Mark Falls, John Hutchison, John Kite, Carol Ann Ladd, Diane Lux, Pamela Miller, Lorio Presut, Lisa Polson, Dagny Rumps, Tom Sheridan, Robin Simmons, Margaret Votypka, Anne Moran, and Betsy Wilken. This was, it was a great class this year. Each year, the district provides the opportunity for those interested to learn more about the school district and its inner workings. These volunteers chose to attend the Citizens Education Academy, making time in their busy schedules for six nights of two-hour sessions to learn about curriculum, school finance, what it takes to be Kansas City's 14th-largest employer, crisis planning, and a wide range of other operations. Tonight is graduation night for one of the largest classes we've ever had, so please help us congratulate the graduates of the class of 2007 Citizens Education Academy. No, okay. We have a special teacher here tonight, Camille Roy, third-grade teacher at Clearwater Creek Elementary. We'll ask her to come forward with her principal, Mr. Randy Smith. Camille hasn't been teaching long, but she's already making a big impact. After getting her degree in education in 2000, she earned a master's degree in curriculum leadership in 2002, and national board certification in 2005. She teaches third grade at Clearwater Creek Elementary School and has served on a variety of district committees. Last week, she was honored by the Johnson County Rotary Club as the Young Educator Johnson County Teacher of the Year. It is our pleasure to honor her tonight. Congratulations. Okay, do you have any family members here? Now, we'd like our writing contest winners to come forward with Ms. Kay Haas, Language Arts Coordinator, and their principal, their teachers, and their principals. Writing contest winners, come on down. Lauren Griffin, Amanda Hara, Ryan Hara, Taylor Boots, Dylan Ginther, Devin Smith, Matt Hayes, Jessica Macy, and Zach Stanley, and their teachers, and principals Julie Richards from Briarwood, Stephanie Dansko from Central, Tanya Ravenwood from, Tanya Channel from Ravenwood, Stacy Yurkovich from Prairie Trail, Dr. Connie Heinen from Olathe North, and Dr. Gwen Paz from Olathe Northwest. Writing is critical to our students' success, both during school and after they graduate from school. Through the writing curriculum, students learn to write for multiple audiences in a variety of formats. Olathe students have excelled in writing for many years, as is evidenced by the number of students being honored tonight for outstanding achievement. Recently, the district learned that all four high schools have earned the Kansas Standard of Excellence in writing, along with Indian Trail and Chisholm Trail Junior High Schools and nine elementary schools, Arbor Creek, Bentwood, Black Bob, Rome, Mahappy, Prairie Center, Ravenwood, Regency Place, and Walnut Grove. We'll begin our individual writing recognitions with our elementary students. These students received awards in the 2007 Kansas Authors Club Youth Contest. Lauren Griffin from Briarwood, first place in poetry. Ryan Hara from Central Elementary, first place in fiction. Amanda Hara from Central, second place in nonfiction. Taylor Boots from Heritage Elementary, third place in fiction. Dylan Ginther from Ravenwood Elementary, second place in fiction. And our junior high winner is Megan McLaughlin from Prairie Trail, who was not able to be with us tonight, who achieved the Certificate of Recognition, which is the top honor in the Promising Young Writers Contest sponsored by the National Conference of Teachers of English. And our senior high winners, Sarah Ann Stett, who also couldn't be here, and Devin Smith from Olathe North, winners of the 2007 Achievement Award from the National Council of Teachers of English. And from Northwest High School, Matt Hayes and Jessica Macy were semifinalists, and Zach Stanley was a finalist in the National Iron Rand Essay Writing Contest. Congratulations to these students and their teachers. Would the family, would the parents and families please stand and be recognized? Now, Mr. Bob Courtney, our District Energy Manager, and Susan DeGroot, Principal of Manchester Park Elementary School, will be recognized. Susan, and some members of her staff. The Energy Star Award is given by the Environmental Protection Agency for buildings that qualify through their efficient operations. As you probably remember, in August, five of our schools received this award, and tonight, we are honoring Manchester Park Elementary School for its recognition with the Energy, the very heavy Energy Star Award. The building staff contribute by turning off lights and computers, keeping outside doors closed, and reporting problems like dripping faucets. The Operations Service Center assists through its energy management program. Please join us in congratulating Susan DeGroot and the Manchester Park staff and students. Congratulations. And Mr. Steve Massey, Principal of Oregon Trail Junior High School. And I was going to call Dr. Heinen, but Dr. Jan Heinen isn't here, is she? You have to stand there by yourself, Steve. The State of Kansas Scholarship Contest, which is sponsored by the Assessment and Teaching Enhancement Center at Emporia State University, recognizes and rewards academic achievement by Kansas students. They sponsor an annual contest for students in grades seven through 12, covering a variety of subjects. More than 5,300 students representing 169 schools across Kansas participated in the 2007 contest, and Oregon Trail Junior High School finished first in its division. Congratulations to the Oregon Trail staff and students. Now, Mr. Parker, if you would come down. Mr. Parker became a board member after having served on at least two time-consuming volunteer district task forces. The Task Force 2000, which looked at facility needs into the 21st century, and the Boundary Advisory Task Force, which meant monthly or more often for two years before the opening of Olathe Northwest. Since being elected to the Board of Education, more than once, he has volunteered regularly to serve in a variety of roles, including representing the district with the Kansas Association of School Boards. Tonight, we would like to recognize him for his most recent accomplishment, for completing the training required to achieve a Level 1 Certificate of Achievement from the KASB Boardsmanship Academy Training Program. No family members? I'm sure they're watching on television. And this final recognition is for the Olathe School District, and Rita Lyon, our Executive Director of Technology, will come up with a plaque. For the second year in a row, Olathe's district schools ranks fifth in the nation among large districts for being technology proficient, according to the Center for Digital Education and the National School Boards Association. The two organizations rank school districts according to how school boards in their respective districts apply information technology to better engage local communities and constituents, and improve service delivery and quality education to public schools. The district shows innovative uses for technology in its digital classrooms, web-based access to all Board of Education policies, agendas, and meetings, wireless technology at all buildings, digital communication, including voicemail, email, text messaging, and web tools for patrons, and online learning for students. So congratulations to our district and to the district's technology department. So congratulations to our district and to the district's technology department. I'm sorry, is Larry Spotts here? I would like to call Larry Spotts, President of ONEA, to recognize American Education Week.
Thank you, I hope that wasn't too discreet when I yelled it loudly. You'll all, you all know that traditionally, the week before Thanksgiving of each year, we celebrate American Education Week. I'm accompanied tonight by two of my executive board members, Kate Thompson, who is a library media specialist at Olathe Northwest High School, and Ruth Henderson, who teaches 2nd grade at Black Bob Elementary. And we just want to take a moment to celebrate or to prepare our celebration with the Board of Education for this year's 86th Annual American Education Week. We wanted to start, first of all, with a little bit of history. American Education Week really dates all the way back to 1919, right after World War I, the American Legion and the National Education Association met, because they were very concerned about 25% of the draftees in that war, American draftees being illiterate, and 9% being physically unfit. And so the NEA and the American Legion met to seek ways to generate public support for education. Then in 1921, the National Education Association Representative Assembly met just north of here in Des Moines, Iowa, and called for the designation of one week each year to spotlight education. They called for an educational week observed in all communities annually for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools, and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. The first actual observance of American Education Week occurred December 4th through the 10th in 1921, with the National Education Association and the American Legion as the original cosponsors. A year later, the then U.S. Office of Education joined our efforts as a cosponsor, and the PTA joined us in 1938. There's a whole list of cosponsors, of course, for this year's observance. So Kate Thompson, library media specialist at Northwest, and one of our executive board members, would like to read a proclamation to the public and the board this evening.
Whereas, public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality; and whereas, by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future; and whereas, education employees, be they substitute educators, custodians, teachers, bus drivers, or librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children in communities with care and professionalism; and whereas, schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and elected officials in common enterprise. Now therefore, I, Kate Thompson, serving as a member of the Olathe National Education Association of Olathe, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November 11 through 17 as the 86th Annual Observance of American Education Week. Thank you.
And congratulations to everyone recognized for awards and recognitions tonight. It's now that part of our agenda where we deal with public comments. At each regular meeting, the board reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that the public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast, on the district's Educational Access Channel, and audiotaped, recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room to my right, and state your name and address before you begin your comments. We have one speaker who signed up prior to the meeting, that's Ms. Connie Leoni. Ms. Leoni, if you'll come to the podium, please.
Hi. As you know, my name is Connie Leoni, and I'm here to ask you to remove the Book of Mice and Men from the school system. I had about a 12-minute speech, so I need to really cut this down, so. This all started in about 2004. I had a son named Sean Leoni in Mr. Franzen's 9th grade English class at Indian Trail. Mr. Franzen wanted the students to read of mice, the Book of Mice and Men, and we went to get it, and Sean reviewed it, and within an hour, he had gotten back to me and said, "Mom, this book is awful, you know, it's just filled with profanity." And I said, "You're kidding." And so, anyway, I, I had had a previous student also in that class, Blake Leoni, and I said, "Well, didn't you, weren't you in Mr. Franzen's class?" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "Did you read this book?" And he said, "Yeah." I said, "Why didn't you tell me it had all this information, this profanity in it?" And he said, "Well, I didn't think it would make any difference, I just thought I had to read it." So he didn't, you know, he didn't tell me. Anyway, Sean was given a different book called A Separate Peace, after I spoke with Mr. Franzen and told him I didn't really care for the, that type of, that book. Now, here we go again, in 2007, I have four sons, so this is the last one, and this is, he's 14, his name's Joe, and he's again in Mr. Franzen's class. Mr. Franzen, at the beginning of the year, last year in May, he sent me a letter and told me all the books that he was going to have the students read for the upcoming year, primarily because of Mice and Men was on that list, and he wanted me to be aware of it, he knew I didn't care for it from previous years. And so, he wanted me to get back to him by the 6th of July, as if I wanted Joey to opt out of that book, and I did get back to him, and told him he did want a different book. After that, I went ahead and read the whole book, I finally had time. I typed up three pages of profanity that are used in the book, and, which I think you have some packets, hopefully, so you have it all in there. And then I called to find out the process for removing the book from the school system, and on 6/21, as you can probably see, I filed my formal request to consider removal of the, of the book, based on the following: that profanity was used at least 160 times throughout the book, and I hope all the young children have left. If they haven't, you may want to close your ears. I'm going to give you an example of profanity in this book. Page 12, the first page, if that bus driver, near four miles, I'm kind of leaving out some parts, but that's how it starts out, too lazy to pull up, wonder if he's too lazy to stop, hot day, you're a crazy, that's page 12, that's one page. Page 13, that's what I said. Page 15, you're gonna work on a ranch? Page 17, run us out, you're a lot of trouble. Let's see, since my time is short, page 24, feel a little girl's dress, drink whiskey? You crazy, need I go on? There are three pages of this trash. Anyway, that was the primary reason I asked for the book to be removed from the system. However, there is use of the word stated several times, there's discussion, as you heard, of that imply that casual sex is okay, and without moral consequence, there's discussion of drinking, whiskey, booze, and they indicate it's okay if you're down and out, if you just need to have a little fun or a little, there's verbal abuse through the use of profanity, there's an unlawful killing in this book. It's unacceptable. We went through the process, my mother and I, we went through the process and visited with various people, beginning with Allison Banikowski, on, after several meetings and realizing that the people I was talking to felt the book should stay in the system and really had no problem with profanity in it for a 14-year-old, I moved on to ask for a formal committee to get together to review this, the book, and I was not, I could not be on the committee. I realized there were some community members that were going to be a part of this committee. I asked if I had any chance in asking, picking out the community members to be in the meeting. I was told I did not. So the meeting went on, and it was kind of like being in front of a, having a jury rule on your, your case, and you not even being there to be able to present your side of the facts, and I think it's something that should be changed with our, our system here. I have just a lot more, but I want to make sure you have some time to ask me any questions, if you have any. At any rate, the, the review committee stated that they felt the book should stay in the system, they felt there was some, it, it really did a, a good job as far as important themes of personal responsibility and obligations of friendship. For any of you who don't know what the book is about, Lenny is a somewhat retarded individual, and he always fears that George, the other main character, his supposed best friend, will leave him if he messes up. Page 17, again, there's, if this is an idea of friendship, I guess I missed the definition of what a true friendship is, and I hope I don't ever have a friend like this. Page 17, again, we got, you're in a lot of trouble. Page 24, you crazy, trace, page 59, you crazy, page 63, that big over there, he's my friend. Page 72, I used to have a lot of fun.
Ms. Leoni, your time has expired, would you please make your closing comment?
My closing comment is I've gone through the whole system, and I, this book, everyone has declined to remove this book from the system, and I'm asking you, the board who represents the parents of this community, to get rid of this, of this book. I feel you have a moral duty to remove this book from the system, to protect our children from talking this way in the future. And just one last note, I was just talking to my senior in Olathe South tonight, and he was just saying, and I've heard, I hear this all the time, how, how terrible the language is at the high schools, and that he said he can barely pass from one class to the other, to the other, without hearing the F-word three times. And it also goes on at the junior highs, and if any of you don't believe it, I think you should dress up incognito and go through some of these schools, and hear what the students are talking about. All they need is another book like this to teach them how to swear. And I truly hope that you accept your responsibility and duty to this community to get rid of this book. Thank you. Do you have any questions about anything I have put in, in the packet that you have?
Oh, Ms. Leoni, this is not a time for discussion about this, this is just your public comments, and we thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comments tonight? Okay, well, consider the public comments section of the board meeting concluded, and board members, if you would, without objection, I'd like to move to the Agenda Item 7.06, which relates to instructional material reconsideration, refers to the matter that Ms. Leoni was speaking about. We have, Ms. Leoni, for your benefit, we have received the information, and we've received all of the information that you have been involved in in this appeal process, including the committee, including the superintendent, and now it's been brought to us at your request, and we're preparing, I believe, to take action on that tonight, so with that, I'll open the floor for any discussion or motions.
We looking for motions or comments or?
Either are.
Discussion? I've thought about it long and hard, and I do have some comments, so fellow board members, please bear with me. First of all, I want to thank the staff and the committee for their due diligence in analyzing the policies according to the, or the policies that we've set before them. I want to thank Ms. Leoni for her sincere request and patience to be sure she complained, complied with the process of the policy. And as I start my comments, I must expose that I am not a literary giant. I'm not a real fan of the, of the books, I like, I'm an engineer, so I like books with facts in them, so I will admit that. I'm gonna direct my comments primarily to my fellow board members, but also to the public that is here in attendance. I've always thought that our motto up there, "Students prepared for the future," should really be stretched to stating something like assisting parents in preparing their children to be responsible adults. With that definition in mind, basically, it becomes incumbent for us to teach responsibility for your actions, for your thoughts, for your speech, to be consistent, tough for any of us to do in this world, but it's a virtue to strive for. We also have to learn, teach them how to make choices. We're gonna be confronted with many, many situations, we have to evaluate them and then make decisions. We have to respect, have to have respect for people, for property, and for others around us. We have to learn the use of appropriate language, make it nonoffensive, and it should be proper. It sounds like we're expected to reinforce parents' efforts to build character. I believe it is. In fact, Jim Ader, our Activities Director, spends a great deal of time delivering speeches about character to our kids, to our parents. Olathe is a city of character, and I think we need to assist parents in developing that character. So how does this relate to the Book of Mice and Men? Well, the language used in this book is in sharp contrast to what we would allow in our classrooms, by our teachers, by our students, or in our board meeting, or in the athletic fields, or by our debate teams, et cetera. Let's be consistent. We all have a set of standards by which we, which serve as a foundation for how we live our lives. A large percentage of our community uses another book, the Bible is their foundation for living, and the language in this book is a direct affront to those who make use of the Bible for their guidance. Plus, the use of the GD word does nothing to enhance the message of the book, so I would consider it a purposeful effort to insult others, lack of respect. I alone am responsible for the decision I make on this vote. I accept that responsibility, I take it very seriously, and since our actions on the board set the character of our schools, I must be consistent in my vote, as I would be in my house with my children. In addition, because of the enormous quantity of available classics, no one is going to be traumatized by not being exposed to any one book. If they are, they can always read it on their own time, when their parents make the decision that it is appropriate for them to read. The burden of proof of why this book is necessary in the education of our children should be on us as a school district. I sympathize with Ms. Leoni and respect her because the burden of proof has been wrongly transferred to her. We wouldn't expect us board members to use this language, we wouldn't allow our students to speak that way in the classroom. We'd probably reprimand a coach if he or she addressed their athletes or referee using this language. So why should we allow an author to speak to our kids using this language? There are other issues I would object to in this book, but it's not necessary to delve into those, because I feel the inappropriate language serves to disqualify the book. Part of parenting is teaching your children to deal with peer pressure. Many factors can be cited for why this classic should be allowed. The experts can defend the attributes of the book, but it does not meet the standard for classroom behavior. Since the words are in print, they can't be retracted, therefore, the book should not be used. My decision is not about censorship. Parents are still fueled, are still free to buy the book for their child. A book club can be started if they want to, by students, if they feel they're being deprived. My decision is based on choice. The author chose to include offensive language. The publisher chose to print it as written. Based on the choices they've made, it does not fit within the definition of character that I think we choose to develop in our children. Therefore, I think we should look elsewhere for the instructional material used in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollan, any other comments? There are no other comments, there's a motion to be entertained.
Being consistent with my comment, I would move that we take action to overturn the recommendation of the Review, Review Committee and the Superintendent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I'd like to speak to the, to the motion and to this, this whole issue, I guess, a little bit. While I understand the concerns of Ms. Leoni, I understand and appreciate the comments you've made, Mr. Pollan. I think if we begin the process of trying to remove materials from our school district that have any type of offensive word, or any type of offensive language, or any type of offensive situation, we're going to find ourselves in a position we don't want to be in as a community and as a school district. We believe we're sensitive to parents' needs by allowing the opportunity for parents to choose to opt their student out of objectional material if they find it objectionable. And I, you know, I find it objectionable myself. I've used it as an object lesson in my home with my son, who is a ninth grader, and reading this very book this year about why we don't use that kind of language. And again, I don't want to get too far into the woods about this specific book. It's more the general policy matter that, that I'm addressing, and I will vote against the motion. And that I believe I would choose to support the recommendation of the review committee and the superintendent with respect to what's been reviewed in this matter.
I too have thought long and hard about this, as Ms. Leoni brought this to my attention and several years ago. I've read the book, and I have come to the conclusion that irregardless of how I feel about the book personally, I have to make a decision that supports the Constitution. And I believe in freedom of the press, and I understand that there's some objectionable materials in this, but I don't believe that as a public servant that I should be in a position to sanction or to censor materials that I may or may not personally agree with because I believe that the law of the land says that the public has a right to, to be exposed to the book. And then I think as a school district, we have an obligation to allow parents to opt out of it, and also an obligation to, to inform the parents, which we do, and for the parents to teach their children a character lesson in regards to the book. But to me, the overriding consideration here is that I see this as censorship, and I, I can't support that.
I think there are two things that we need to consider. First, I believe that there is a policy in place. We have, as Mr. Parker and Mr. Gilmore have mentioned, we have the policy in place for parents to opt out of having their students read books that are, they feel are inappropriately, are inappropriate for that age group. Secondly, we also have in place academic experts whose job it is to select literature for our students. They have a wide variety of criteria that they use. They have a wide variety of books and choices that they provide at each grade level. I agree with Mr. Gilmore. We're going down a road I don't think we want to. If we start to question every choice of every book, I cannot support the motion.
I concur with the statements that have been made by Mr. Gilmore, by Dr. Daniels, and by Mr. Parker. I believe that what Mr. Pollan said is true, that we are assisting our students in developing adult behavior, and we are assisting them in learning to be responsible adults. And I think a part of learning to be responsible adults is being exposed to a variety of behaviors that, as adults, we encounter in our daily lives. And I think that is an important skill for young people to learn, and I also would vote against the motion.
I would also support the policy and the process that is in place, not only by the review committee, but the opportunities to opt out and opportunities for other decisions. I too believe it's important for us to, along with guidance from our staff, to support helping young students learn to disseminate against or look at options that are available as we try to help them and guide them in an educational setting.
Any further comments before we vote? Okay, Mrs. Carpenter.
Ms. Ashley?
No.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
No.
Mr. Gilmore?
No.
Mr. Parker?
No.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
No.
Okay, and the motion does not pass? The motion fails? Is there an alternative motion?
Mr. Gilmore, I would make a motion that would support the recommendations of the review committee and the superintendent to retain the instructional material.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Churchman?
No.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
No.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Thank you for that discussion. We'll now move back to item 2 dot 05 relating to the sales tax update that I believe I interrupted you, Dr. All, when you were in the middle of presenting that information, so we'll go back to that and then move on to the rest of the agenda from there.
I would just recap quickly that we were talking about the sales tax known as the Economic Development Grant that had been provided to public schools in Johnson County over the last five years. That sales tax will sunset in December of 2008 and will no longer be part of our revenue going forward into 2009, 2010's school year. That is $5.4 million that's currently in our budget. In addressing this and taking a look at this for the future, we are, the board asked me to look at some different options. The county commission did pass a resolution September 6th to have that quarter cent sales tax currently going to the school districts be provided for county needs and jails, justice systems, and other public safety-related items. The board asked me to provide some options for the board to consider, and in researching that, whether or not the board had any alternatives in order to either work with the county, to look at continuing the, the benefits of the tax for the school districts, or if there were any other methods by which the board could resolve the ballot issue. First of all, as we looked at that, there are two opportunities for the board to put a question on the ballot. One of those is the resolution that would take at least a two-thirds majority of governing bodies in taxing subdivisions, and this is a little bit tricky, but that have at least 25% of the property taxes. Basically, what this means is that either the Alathus School Board and either Shiny Mission or Blue Valley would meet that threshold. Alathus and any other school district would not meet that threshold. So the bottom line is it would take at least two of the three larger districts to pass a resolution. The second option that the statute provides is petitions signed by electors of Johnson County equal to, but not less than, 10% of the electors who voted in the last preceding election. Basically, this means that if there were about 17,840 signatures collected counting wide, that petition could place a question on the ballot. That's another method. So either by taxing entities or by petition signatures. In either of those cases, since there's already a ballot question on by the county, there is really no clear legal authority on how to resolve that at this point. That is the unclear. That is the unclear part of this particular, these two particular options. And if we were to move forward on either one of those, it would take some gathering of additional information on my staff's part. Another option would be to follow up with the letter that we received September 10th from Commissioner Serbaugh in response to the letter Mr. Gilmore and I sent questioning and, and asking for a meeting prior to the county taking their action. And in that letter back to us, Commissioner Serbaugh did indicate that we could be invited in to meet to discuss any of our questions and concerns. So that might be another option to consider as a next step. Or we can just leave this as it is and not continue to talk about it. So those are the basic options, I think, that I'm bringing back to the board. I need a little direction from the board in terms of what might be a next step here moving forward, and would appreciate any discussion.
You need just a little direction, right? You need a lot of direction on this issue, I think. Thank you, Dr. All. Comments from board members about what we've had presented to us and the, the options that have been laid out by staff? Okay, let me pursue then some comments. Mr. Parker, you were reaching for your microphone. Go ahead. Well, I, I would just like to say, the staff has recommended that we consider directing the superintendent, and, and I would include myself in, in the pursuit of that, as well as Ms. Ashley's board officers, a meeting with the county commissioners, or even a joint meeting. I don't know how all that would work out technically or legally, but at least to meet with the, the leadership there, to talk about mutually agreeable proposals. And, and I think that two-way dialogue has been absent from this whole discussion, and that's not to be critical of anyone. I just think we need to, I would like to see us take that next step before we consider any other of the options that may be in front of us. And I think we need that information and that feedback before we can move on as, as a governing body. So those are my thoughts, and I appreciate your feedback on that.
Mr. Gilmore, I fully support that proposal. I think it's the right thing to do. I think if we look out across the county, they've been a great partner of ours. They have very tangible needs, which are real and need to be addressed. And I would hope that through the discussion, that the message that would come out is that partnership that has been so successful here, particularly over the last three years plus, continues to be that way, and that also that the board remains resolute on doing what's right for the community, and that is putting the, the proper choices out there in front of the community. And this previous economic grant flourished under the fact that it was, as most people know, a school-centric proposal that was focused on continuing education in Johnson County in one of the most affordable ways for the community. So I would hope that those discussions, which I believe are appropriate, would allow us to find a way to mutually satisfy the very real needs of the county while also protecting the community and funding education in the best way possible.
I would agree, Mr. Gilmore. And when I review the county commission, the chair of the county commission's letter from September the 10th, the school board referenced one paragraph where Ms. Serbaugh stated, "I believe the quality of our public schools is a vital matter of community interest, and I think that all of the community's key stakeholders should be involved in identifying real solutions to the challenges our schools face now and in the future. I stand ready to join with the schools and in this effort, and hope we can continue to have positive collaborative relationships in the future." So I, I think that's an open invitation for us to sit down and have some dialogue, outline our, our needs, our concerns, and see if there's any specific actions that can come out of that that would benefit both the county and, and their needs for public safety, and as well as the need for the county to have an educated citizenry.
I think at the last meeting, we asked Dr. All to explore the options available to us, and I think this is the first step to explore those, so I fully can agree with it, too.
Well, I think I'm hearing consensus to move forward in this direction. We don't need to take an action on this, I don't believe, but if we're hearing consensus to do this, and, and Dr. All, I think that's the direction you're looking for. So thank you for that feedback. Now we'll move on to section five of our agenda, which is action on our consent agenda items, section five. Number of items are listed there. I'll not read them aloud in detail, but I would ask our board members, are there any items there which you wish to have pulled for separate vote, or items which you have questions on?
Mr. Gilmore, I would like to have 5.01, the minutes of the previous meeting pulled, and I would like to recuse myself for the vote on that because I was not at the meeting.
Okay, we can do that. If there are no other questions or items to be pulled, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, less item 5.01.
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of 5.01, approval of minutes for November 2007.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
That motion passes. Mrs. Carpenter, please note for the record, Mr. Parker has excused himself from the room, and we'll deal with item 5 dot 01, approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Is there a motion?
Mr. Gilmore, I move that we approve the minutes for November 2007 as written.
Actually, that's October.
October 2007, excuse me.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker? Oh, excuse me. Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
And that motion passes, and please note for the record, Mr. Parker has returned to the meeting. Item six, dealing with action on bids, contracts, and agreements, same question here. Is there any particular item that you have questions or would like pulled separately? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve these en masse.
Mr. Gilmore, I've moved to approve bids, contracts, and agreements as listed.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Churchman, seconded by Mr. Pollan. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Section seven of our agenda deals with other individual action items, and we'll move to 7 dot 01 related to the, the location of Elementary School Number 34. I believe Mr. Grollop is going to, is he going to present something on this, Dr. All? Or are we just going to discuss that?
I believe the location that is being recommended here, we would be willing to take any questions about unless you'd like a, a brief overview of this. This is totally up to the board.
Let me rephrase that. Mr. Grollop is available for questions. Sorry, Chris, didn't mean to put you on the spot there. That presentation, you didn't know you had coming. So I'll open the floor for discussions or questions of staff. Mr. Churchman?
I did have one, Mr. Grollop, in regards to the, the site that's north of K-10. That's, that school, that site is there to relieve Manchester Park, so what is our timeline for that? And what, what's your projected, projection on that in regards to growth in the Manchester Park's, uh, community?
Um, the site that we own at 95th and Claire, roughly, is within, actually, with the Cedar Creek attendance area, and it would, it could relieve Cedar Creek as well as Manchester Park. The timing of elementary schools af, the next elementary school and the location of that is really going to depend upon residential growth in the area.
But there's no big, a big rush to do, in other words, we don't have a crisis to, to deal with that right now?
Manchester Park is growing, but right now it is something that they still, that they do have some space, some future space. It's a slow growth. It's not like Cedar Creek growing by 100 students a year.
But then that, I would, I would move that we would accept staff recommendation to construct Elementary School Number 34 to open in August of 2009 on site number one in the Forest View Arbor Woods subdivisions.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Is there a second?
Second, but I have a question to go along with it. Mr. Grollop, just out of curiosity, from the data you've given us, it would appear that the, probably the next logical location for 35 would probably be to relieve Clearwater Creek. Just from the data you've shown us, is that, does that make sense, or is that a wrong
That is a possibility. The district does own two elementary school sites, the one that Mr. Parker alluded to, as well as one at 148th and Lake Shore Drive. It's really going to, really comes down to depending upon how fast these two areas grow. We expected that area north of K-10 Highway to grow faster than it has. If current growth rates continue, that would probably be a safe assumption.
Thank you.
Question concerning Cedar Creek. I think this is the second
I think this is the second or third time that we have downsized Cedar Creek in population. What... I look at the numbers that you have given us in existing homes and growth. What does the future for Cedar Creek look like?
Right now, our projections show a continued pattern. This would be the third school that would receive students from Cedar Creek. Back in 2004, Manchester Park received students. In 2005, Ravenwood received students. In 2009, this new... If the Elementary School 34 will receive students from there. It's going to continue to grow. It's going to continue to have new schools open into the attendance area. And it's going to continue to have schools that. I would expect that probably at least two more schools will come from Cedar Creek's attendance area in, over the next 10, 15 years.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? We have a motion on the floor to approve the staff recommendation. Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda item 7.02, Architectural Fee Proposal for Elementary School Number 34. Are there any questions, comments related to this recommendation? If not, we'll entertain a motion, please.
I move that we accept the proposal from Hollis and Miller Group in the amount of $282,000 to site adapt the plans previously developed for Madison Place Elementary.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
And that motion passes. 7.03, related to Construction Management for Elementary Number 34. We also have a recommendation from staff there to accept the proposal from Universal Construction Company in the amount of $429,075. If there's no discussion or questions, a motion will be in order.
I had a quick question for Greg. I noticed that our construction manager fee on Madison Place was $386,86,929. That's a fairly substantial increase. Could you address that, please?
That's approximately an 11% increase. It's an 11% increase pretty much across the board when you compare both fee, direct personnel expenses, and reimbursable expenses. When I inquired, the reasons they gave were increased cost of personnel, pay raises for personnel, increased overhead, increased insurance. But it is about an 11% increase. I would say that they have not had increases of that size from past projects. So some of this could be a residual problem from the past.
Mr. Thompson, what if we ask him that we would like to negotiate a lower percentage increase?
I can certainly attempt that.
Never hurts to ask. If you don't ask, you don't give an opportunity to say yes.
Let's put it this way. I have asked. The school board has not asked yet. There is a difference between me asking and you asking.
I think we're asking.
Yes, I think you are, too. And I'm not trying to be smart there. There's a difference. I have tried to negotiate a lower price. There's a difference between me trying and you trying when you deal with a construction manager. I'll certainly take that information back to them.
Would that delay the opening of the school?
I don't believe so, if we can resolve it by next month.
Also in that asking, if there can be a large... A breakdown, a better breakdown of what those fees might look like if it's not possible for negotiation of lower.
I can certainly try that. I can tell you, in the last 10 years, 13 years working with the school district, and in the five or six years before that, when I worked in general construction, getting a breakdown of the fee is going to be very, very difficult. I can ask for that. I can get a better breakdown of the direct personnel expenses. I can get a better breakdown of the reimbursable expenses. We may or may not be able to get anything more than a lump sum for the fee. But I'll ask for it.
I just think when you have 11% increase, that's a pretty... Seems to be a large increase.
It did to me. Like I said, we discussed it. Be glad to take it back to them.
Thank you.
I just would further comment, Mr. Thompson, and I know those are probably your personal opinion remarks about perhaps we're seeing some increase for costs from prior projects. I just want to make sure, as a board member, I don't want that to be included in what they're proposing today. I want it only to be on this project. And because all was done in fair bidding and so forth, negotiations in the past, and...
I understand.
If that needs to be clearly stated, that's definitely my opinion.
I understand that.
Thank you. And I know we have a good relationship with this organization. And I'm not saying that to be critical.
And I think the important thing to note here, you know, our typical practice would be to receive fee proposals from more than one project manager, for comparison. In this case, they're offering the exact same personnel who have built the exact same plan three times. There appears to be some efficiency in that. But I'd be glad to get a letter from the president of the company explaining his fee in more detail. And like I said, we'll have it next month.
Good, thank you very much. I think there appears to be consensus on the board to move in that direction. So we'll not take action on this tonight and give you that direction. Item 7.04, we have two items related to Woodland Elementary here. 7.04 first deals with water line easement. And there's a recommendation from the staff there to approve that.
Mr. Gilmore, I move to authorize signature of water main extension. Let's see, am I one ahead here? Yeah, to grant a permanent 20-foot wide easement for the construction and maintenance of the water main associated with Woodland Elementary to Water District Number 1 of Johnson County, Kansas.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Thank you. 7.05 deals with a water main extension petition related to Woodland Elementary. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we authorize signature of the water main extension petition to Water District Number 1 of Johnson County, Kansas, for the installation of a water main to provide service to Woodland Elementary.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Daniels, thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Thank you. That's all the items under Section 7. We'll move on to Section 8, which is Future Action Items. And I would just ask board members, are there any particular items listed there in 8.1 through 8.13 that you have questions or comments on? Additional information perhaps needed from staff for future action? Dr. Daniels?
I would have questions related to 8.03, full-day kindergarten.
Dr. Banikowski, are you going to take those questions? Or do you have a staff member you'd like to take that question?
Either myself or Mr. Martin can take those questions.
I understand the rationale for the potential proposal. And I guess what I'm asking for is a little more information as to how the parents in the Title I schools who don't qualify for free and reduced lunch, so those small percentages of students who would not qualify, at what level their incomes are, and whether or not they can afford those programs. I'm sure, and perhaps there's a policy already in place, and I'm unaware of it, if we have any kind of mechanism for adjusting tuition for that program. I say this for two reasons. First is, from my background in special education, I think it's important that children who are at risk for learning have the benefit of having children who maybe have more enriched environments and who are learning at a quicker rate, have access to those children throughout their day. And I think if we limit the size of that classroom to those children who only qualify by that very narrow margin, that we're doing ourselves a disservice. And so I'd just like some additional information. And if it's in written form, you could email it to me, or we can come back and discuss it. But just the proposal, in the way I read it now, I don't think I could support it.
Just to augment that question as well, excuse me. I'd like to have added on to that, what was the original premise or thought process behind establishing the proposal as it exists today? And just try... I'd like to revisit that and just understand.
Mr. Churchman?
Go ahead, Dr. Banikowski.
It's a very important issue. Thankfully, we don't have to make a decision this evening. But we felt it was definitely an important issue that we needed to bring before the board. I'll answer Mr. Churchman's question historically a bit first. And that is, you have to remember, when we started services, full-day kindergarten for our Title I schools, we started them at the four poorest schools that had the largest percentage of free and reduced lunches. That has changed over time. In the... Now that we provide that at all 10 of our Title I schools, there is a definite percentage difference in the number of students that are participating in those full-day kindergarten programs, those that are qualifying for free and reduced lunch, and those that are not qualifying for free and reduced lunch. So the percentage is different between a school such as Indian Creek or Countryside versus a school such as...
Dr. Banikowski, could we have you go to the microphone?
Central.
Ms. Power in Numbers, Mr. Martin, you better get up there.
Would you like me to start that little history again? I will start again. Our history in our providing full-day kindergarten in our Title I schools has changed over time. So to look back historically, while we initiated, we, of course, initiated at our poorest of our Title I schools that were serving the highest percentage of free and reduced lunch. And that was our goal at first, was to provide a more extended learning opportunity for those students in kindergarten. At that time, of course, we had no fee-based kindergartens in our other non-Title I schools. And we did not even at that time have a full-day kindergarten in all our Title I schools. As we have progressed over time, our Title I schools range in free and reduced lunch price... Free and reduced percentage. We have some schools that have a smaller percentage of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch that would be in that kindergarten program versus the schools we initially started with that had a larger percentage of students on free and reduced lunch. So that gives just a moment of historical perspective, certainly based on the premise that the literature would indicate that students from disadvantaged families benefit from more extended learning in the early childhood grades. Dr. Daniels' question, related to looking at students in those situations who do not qualify for free and reduced lunch, and are they borderline, if you will? We certainly don't have access to that type of information. Certainly could request that type of information. Then we'd have to make a decision of what that information meant, what type of information we would gather. Would we be pay stubs or tax file information? But we don't currently have that information. So all we can say is either the student qualifies for free and reduced lunch or does not qualify for free and reduced lunch. Again, you bring also the point up of peer models. And the benefit of that in a situation where we have students on both sides of the economic bracket there. And that would be an impact we'd have to look at if this proposal should move forward. There certainly could be other ways to handle this proposal. Mr. Martin, would you ask?
Dr. Banikowski, I have a question for you on that. I know in other instances in the district, if a student has financial hardship and is unable to participate in something that they would like to, while it's maybe not to the complexity of this, the district affords them an opportunity to do so. Would the same type of consideration be applicable here if a family came forward and said, "We're unable to financially bear the cost of this"? Is there some type of mechanism that would give consideration?
That's almost exactly what I wanted to respond to. In making the proposal, I would hope that we would not have the inflexibility... I'm not sure I said that right. That we would have the flexibility of being able to look at students with needs, whether it be financial or academic needs, in looking at this procedure. I think it would be very similar to what we do with summer school program. In our summer school program, while we look at financial needs, we also look at academic needs of the students. And we really try to make sure that we provide an opportunity to scholarship those students who really need to be in summer school. And I think I would hope that we would have that flexibility in looking at this procedure as well. Because in some cases, you might even have a student who, for whatever reason, maybe they are borderline financially, maybe they would not qualify for free and reduced lunch. But there would be great benefit in their participating in a full-day kindergarten program. And I would hope we would be able to look at that.
I think if we received direction from the board, we could explore some factors such as that. I would want to encourage those parents who do qualify for free and reduced lunch to fill out that paperwork, because that has many benefits for us as an educational system beyond just this. We have had some remarks from our Title I principals saying, "Well, a parent probably qualifies but won't fill out the paperwork." Well, we do want to encourage to fill out that. It's a very important step financially. And also, we would want to get some input from Mr. Deaner and others. And he's certainly been involved in this stage. But we could go back and explore some alternatives to if a student does not qualify for free and reduced lunch but can demonstrate need, whatever we would define that, that we would have some guidelines and procedures for that.
My concern in that would be, and I would welcome some thoughts back from staff as we look into this further, is always a concern, and you've touched upon it, about the families that are unwilling to come forth and have those kinds of discussions. And so I would like to know what that mechanism actually would look like, so we could be most sensitive to those who would have that need.
It was difficult to bring this proposal to the board, if you will. But we felt it was very important that we bring to light, especially in our discussion currently of looking at efficiencies in our system, and the questions that we have received from others, that it was important that we bring this forth for us to grapple with, even though in some ways, from an educational learning perspective, I can talk about one aspect and the concerns of that aspect. But we felt it was very important for us to bring this forth and have this dialogue and discussion.
There clearly are inequities that we need to address. It's just, we need to be very cautious that we don't think only about finances here. These children are entering the academic system in many cases without having had the literacy-rich environment that our other students have that supports them and allows them to be successful. And that needs to be our number-one priority, as far as I'm concerned.
I would have to say that I would agree with you wholeheartedly in that. And that's what I would hope would be a part of this, if it were to be approved.
So we'll look for direction from the board for our next step.
One comment. Maybe we could consider a sliding scale of some sort where the parents were... I understand it's a financial burden of $216 a month. Maybe there's a sliding scale that we can offer them some assistance if they feel compelled to have their child in full-day kindergarten and they don't qualify for free and reduced lunch. And say, "We understand they need to be here. We want them to be here. And we have this opportunity for... If we wanted to call them scholarships, there is a sliding scale based upon the family's financial situation, which is really difficult to measure in many instances, or to get a grasp of in many instances." So, and to get it factual.
Well, we are getting some sense from the board that we'd like us to go back and do some further analysis and maybe bring forth an alternative to just simply free and reduced lunch, not free and reduced lunch.
And I think I'd like to defer to Dr. All for some comments about that, Dr. Banikowski.
We appreciate that. We'll sit down.
I support going back with additional information. I've had a conversation with a principal recently that I believe could give us a little feedback on just some concerns about academic preparation. And I think the point of some of the... about academic preparation, and I think the point of some of the families, if you know where the qualifying numbers for free and reduced lunch in Johnson County, you may not make it, but you're probably struggling a little bit, just in this particular location, so I think we need to look at that, because of the academic preparation issues and making AYP. There's another piece out here, that really, the report doesn't address, that I just want for your awareness, because that is, the schools maybe that are the next ranked 11, 12, and 13 in poverty, that are not receiving Title I services at this point, we have students there on free and reduced lunches, that are not receiving, or maybe having full access to that, so part of the issue that we have is equity across the district in meeting those needs, we do have confidence that our full-day kindergarten programs are better preparing our students moving forward, so we'll take a look at all of these pieces and come back, I think Dr. Banikowski's point is that we wanted to surface some questions that we get at times, and then this, you know, this will be a balancing decision as we go forward.
So, for clarification, Mr. Parker, when you talk about a sliding scale, you're referring solely to Title I's, is that correct? Title I schools?
I think it's difficult to differentiate between the two, you know, when we look at, you know, when we look, we have 41 students in non-Title I schools that are eligible, and if I read that right, you know, that certainly would be a focus, but I think we have to try to be balanced across the entire district, in that regard.
I might add a clarification, where full-day fee-based kindergarten is available, if someone is on free and reduced lunch, we're already taking that into consideration, but again, we don't have fee-based full-day kindergarten everywhere.
Then based on that, then it would be in the Title I schools, we would want our emphasis on that.
Okay, thank you.
Good discussion, good comments and questions. Any other item on that section, that we would need to have some clarification on for future action? Hearing none, we'll move on, Dr. All's informed me that the matter related to the executive session will be deferred till next month, so we will not have an executive session this evening. I did want to, for your information, board members, let you know that Dr. All and Ms. Ashley and myself have been talking about the issue of our board goals, which we need, we have not forgotten, and we need to get back to finishing, thank you, Dr. Daniels, for your email to me, as a reminder, I've asked her, Dr. All, to put, pair the agenda for our December and January meeting, specifically allocating time, if you go back to our little retreat session, we talked about, that's really significant business, and we need to put it on our agenda and do it, not just always call for special sessions, so we're going to take some time to put specifically on our agenda the next two months, to try to sum up those board goals, and finalize that process for moving forward, so just wanted to inform you of that. Anything else for the good of the order tonight? We have no other business on the agenda, we'll stand adjourned, thank you all very much.